Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will now call the role of attendance of the all city members.
Councilor Cooper.
Here.
Councilor Garcia.
Here.
Councilor Robinson.
Yeah.
Councilor Taylor.
Here.
Councilor Lopez.
Here.
Councilor Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Here.
Councilor Zanetta.
Present.
Councilor Brown.
Here.
Councilor Vido.
Present.
Councilor Noriel de Jesus.
Present.
And Councilor Judith Garcia.
Present.
Eleven members present.
You have a call. Thank you, and I just want to welcome back our colleague, Damala Vido, joining us finally. It's a pleasure to see you. The next item on our agenda is the memorands and celebratory resolution, celebratory resolution introduced by Councilor Vido and Councilor Lopez regarding Camilo Hernandez.
We're as Chelsea is a city of residents that understand the value of service to community. Whereas Camilio Hernandez was born in Bogota, Colombia, where he attended La Salle University before transferring to the United States. Whereas Camilio Hernandez was born in Bogota, Colombia, and has lived in the United States for over 20 years. He moved to Chelsea in 2016 with his wife, Esther Bugvi, and two children, Gabriela and Dominic. Camilio has been an active member of the Chelsea community. Whereas when Camilio Hernandez came to the United States at the age of 22, he began to teach tennis at a middle school and only spoke Spanish. Throughout the years, he learned English and now is working on his wife's native language, Hungarian. Whereas even though he enjoyed playing tennis, he had a passion for public service. Camilo Hernandez followed his late father's footsteps, who served the constituents as one of the mayor's cabinet members in his town. He taught his son that leaders are people with actions, not words. His last words were, "When you invest in people, the outcome is priceless." Whereas for the past 18 years, Camilo has been an active member in surrounding communities. He participated in organized neighborhood programs at Pierce Park Sailing Center, Zumex Mario Yumana Academy School, and Tenacity. He has served on the boards of the YMCA, NOAA Neighborhood of Affordable Housing, EBM A East Boston Merchant Association, and Paris Street Community Center. In addition, he has worked closely with various immigrant communities. Now whereas today, Camilo is the Director of the Community Relations for the Board of the FBI Citizens Academy. FBI Citizens Academy has distributed pandemic relief elements, face masks, gloves, and hand sanitizers to local community groups such as Chelsea Collaborative, Veterans Soldiers' Home, and other local organizations. In addition, they provide winter attire to the Boys and Girls Club, to worship music youth academy, and harbor code families. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council on behalf of the residents recognizes and appreciates Camilio Hernandez' earnest dedication to Chelsea's youth and service to our community.
Councilor Vido.
To adopt unanimity under suspension, I'd like to speak on it.
You do. You have a floor.
Pardon everyone, I mean no disrespect, but I will remain sitting down. We, you know, Chelsea has seen a lot of struggle in the past couple of years, and many people in the community, we are a community full of doers and people that are selflessly are continuously giving back to the community. And so I just wanted an opportunity to recognize someone that's usually not someone that is on the front lines or in the pictures in the newspapers, someone that contributes to the community in a way that's usually behind the scenes. As a voodoo for the underdog, I tend to like, you know, behind every leader, there's 30 people holding them up, and I like to make sure that we're acknowledging everybody. And so I just wanted to make sure that we were acknowledging Mr. Camilo Hernandez for his work and contributions to our community and for the work that he so selflessly provides.
Councilor Lopez.
Yes, thank you, everybody, for coming here tonight. We presented this resolution for Camilo, I mean, you know, Camilo for a while, and he's been involved in the community, in politics especially. He ran for state rep in East Boston, and he's been involved for the last couple of years when he moved to Chelsea. And we want to thank you for what you do in the community, and we hope we can continue seeing you around and help us in all what we need in the city, in any events, any, anything that is going on in the community. We hope to see you there, and thank you for what you have done.
Councilor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Judith Garcia.
I know.
I had to say that now.
Clarification, clarification. Thank you so much. I'd like to also, you know, talk about Camilo. Camilo, I had the pleasure of meeting you the first time when you ran for office. I was this young girl, meeting this Latino, being a trailblazer in East Boston, and you know, something that's wonderful that you're teaching your kids is that you have to be a person of your word, a person of action, and you exemplify that in every single way. You know, you have reached out to me personally because you have ways, you want to figure out how you can help, what you can be doing, and you know, just a few weeks ago, you were at a domestic shelter, giving out coats for the children, and I think it's so powerful, the things that you do. You move so quietly, and you do it because you're a selfless person. You understand that politics and service is about the social work, and I think that's what makes you special. We need more people like you. And, y te lo digo en español, para mí eres un orgullo, y es hermoso ver a un latino como tú dedicándote tanto a nuestra comunidad y ayudando de una forma tan sencilla, tan honrada y tan humilde. Así que muchas gracias por ser ese ejemplo para nuestra comunidad latina. Gracias, Camilo.
Anyone else? Seeing no further speakers, that motion was adopted unanimously under suspension. At this time, I'll take a break. If there, if you want to take, we'll take a five-minute recess so that the citation, or rather, the resolution can be presented to Mr. Camilo and can be presented in front. Mr. Camilo, would you like to please come to the front? Thank you. I'll read the next one.
There's also a presentation from the Senate.
Our next item on the agenda is a celebratory resolution introduced by Councilor Vido, Councilor Lopez, and all members of the City Council regarding Fidel Maltese. Whereas Fidel Maltese was born on March 20th, 1983, in Managua, Nicaragua. Fidel Maltese is married to Maria Belem and father to Maya and Anna Victoria. Fidel Maltese came to the United States in 1990, when he was seven years of age. Fidel graduated from Notre Dame High School in Miami, Florida. He attended and graduated Lafayette College in Eastern Pennsylvania. Fidel came to us from Ospey, the city of Chelsea, came to us from Sint Es Corp after 13 years of service. We had three of those. He was a regional engineer and oversaw expansion of the branch in China. And in 2017, Fidel and his wife, Maria Belem, moved to Chelsea, Massachusetts, to integrate in the community, where he would serve as Assistant DBW Commissioner for two years, and then DBW Commissioner for another three years. During his tenure in Chelsea, Fidel has ensured that his department excelled its role and leadership roles in City Hall and the community. Fidel Maltese has been consistent advocate in City Hall to advance projects that would serve the community, such as the revitalization of City Hall by renovating all offices, rehabilitating the historic clock tower, reinventing the use of space within City Hall, creating a water and sewer department, launching the use of 3-1-1 and greeters, and keeping the city clean. Through his projects, Fidel created an atmosphere of pride and by highlighting our neighborhoods and promoting the community's hard work and resilience. Fidel Maltese received his Master's in Public Policy at Tufts University and was accepted as a Senior Fellow at Harvard University Kennedy School of Executive Education. Fidel Maltese was recently unanimously chosen by, as the new Reading Town Manager, only the third town manager in the city's history. And with great pride, Fidel will be the Reading's first Latino leader. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council thank Fidel for his years of service and congratulate him on his new endeavors. I also have here a citation from the State Senate by our State Senator, Saldi Domenico, that "In recognition of your years, six years of loyal, dedicated, committed, outstanding 24/7 service to the residents of Chelsea, be further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success." That this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested and transmitted by the clerk of the court. Councilor Vido.
Move to adopt unanimity under suspension. I'd like to speak on it, please. I also just wanted to add that we also have a citation from both state representatives, Jessica Janino and Dan Ryan. I can't read it because I can't see it, but I promise you it's here. I just want to speak briefly on Fidel. I have had the honor of working with him in the capacity of City Hall and also knowing him personally as a friend. I have seen him as a husband, as a community member, as a City Hall employee, but most importantly, as a father. And it honestly has been such an honor to be able to work with him. I went to Ohio for a couple of months on a healing journey, and I don't know what happened in Chelsea that we would even allow him to leave us. Nonetheless, we'll, I'll take that up with Mr. Ambrosino later. I know that this is a huge L for our city, but a huge gain for Reading. I just want you to know that you embody everything that I would hope City Hall continues to strive for, towards. What you've done with DPW and your short time here with the creation of the Water Department, seeing local guys moving up in positions that they otherwise wouldn't have, seeing local guys getting hired, and just the vibe of community. This DPW, under your leadership, stands head and shoulders above any DPW that I have seen in years. It really is an honor to witness your magic, to know you personally, and I wish you nothing but the very best in Reading, and let me know about any listings that are out there because I might just have to move out there. And to Anna Victoria and Maya, I just want to tell you how lucky you are to have such a great family and how supportive you are to your dad. So shout out to you all. I am so proud to know you, to be friends with you, and I wish you all the very best.
Councilor Lopez.
Thank you. I know Fidel personally for the last, you know, since he moved to Chelsea, and I can't take enough for what you have done for the city. We have better streets and the city sidewalks. We have better lights because of the work that you have done, and also the push from some of us in the City Council, and you have done it. So I'd like to thank Fidel for all the amazing work and time he has dedicated for the city of Chelsea. Fidel has been a great leader in our community and has done an excellent job on his role. Fidel has led great tasks throughout the city and has helped and given us better roads and sidewalks, like I just said. There is so much Fidel has done for Chelsea. Thank you, Fidel. You will be missed. The city of Chelsea will miss you, and we are so proud to see you expand in your career. It's great to see fellow Latinos like you taking important roles like you will be doing. And just want to thank you and your family for all that you do and you have done for us, and congratulations on your new position, and you make us proud. Thank you.
Councilor Cooper.
There's a lot of things I could say about Fidel, but there's one thing that summons Fidel, a great person, a great human being, and someone that cares about the people that works. He tries to do the best he can, and the best that Fidel does is above the rest. And there's something else I have to say about Fidel. He's not afraid. The first time I met him, he went out and he grabbed a TV and he put it in the car. So, a man of his position just goes out and does the job. So that showed me the character of a person. Not only that, through the years that I've been here, he's been probably the best, and he is the best. Whenever you needed something done, he answered to all of us, all the councilors. He was, he's great for that, not only that, and he's, you look at Fidel and you look what a country is because he's an immigrant. And immigrants make our nation, and he's one. He came here as a child, but yet he contributes to this nation. That's what makes us great. He's an ambassador. You look at Fidel and you see an ambassador. It's our loss and the great gain of Reading to have someone of the caliber of Mr. Fidel Maltese. It's been my honor and my pleasure to know you. Thank you for your services.[945.63][945.63](APPLAUSE).
Councilor Judith Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, you know, I will say this, it's been very clear that there's not a single counselor here or a single person from any other department in this City Hall, community members, that have not had the honor to work with you. I think right behind you, there are people who have been right there with you. You have little mentees here, you have some coworkers here that came out to support you, community members that came out to support you, and that speaks to the caliber of a person that you are. And I cannot go without mentioning the beautiful person you have right next to you, your wife. I think the two of you are a power couple in this community. The two of you have done so much in such short time, and I think it's still a blessing that you still hope to live in Chelsea, and we're very fortunate of that. But Fidel, como centroamericana, como hondureña, I can say that you have brought so much hope to this community, especially because we see in you what our colleague just mentioned, the possibility, the possibility of making a place, a better place to live. You've improved many of our residents' quality of life, and it's been through your hard work, through your decisions of hiring local talent and ensuring that we continue to make this community a better place, and we could do it within, within the resources that we have. So thank you for your service. I know that what's coming for Reading, they're not ready for it. I'm sure you're going to be doing amazing things out there, but I'm glad that we're keeping you here. I'm glad that we're keeping your wife here as well, so we can continue to do the good work here in Chelsea. So thank you.
Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't repeat what everyone else has said. What I will say is thank you for your work. Thank you for a job well done. Thank you for being here at the right place at the right time throughout the pandemic, you and your wife. You put yourself on the front line. You left your kids in loved ones' care. You went out there and cared for our city. Fidel, you engaged our community with positive, serious, serious positive attitude, serious positive, you know, just kindness and kindness and love and appreciation for the workers that you had. You engaged those workers. It speaks tremendous effort tonight. You have a bunch of your colleagues here to support you and be with you here to listen to a resolution, and you don't get a lot of folks to come up to listen to a resolution because it's just a piece of paper highlighting some accomplishments. But you went beyond that. Your work speaks for itself, and I just want to say all the best in your next endeavors, and all the best, and wish you all the best, both of you. Take care.
Councilor Taylor.
Fidel, I just wanted to say thank you for a job really well done. And I said this to you, I said this to you privately, but I like to say it publicly too, is that, you know, it was, it really was an honor and a pleasure to work with you during the time I've been up here, you know, our, working with you during the pandemic, making sure people got fed, you know, and any time that there was ever a problem, whether it was a underground spring that was freezing and, you know, you know, not the simplest of problems to solve, or whether it was traffic issues in Prattville and solving a really big problem on Washington Ave, on the curve, I mean, I really thank you for all your, all your real hard work and professionalism that you brought to the job. And I, I can tell you and everybody out there watching that any time there was a problem, and I texted Fidel, and it could be in the morning, it could be, you know, eight, nine o'clock at night, you know, if something was, something happened and I needed, and I needed help, he always responded. And that's what it takes to be a real success, and it's a credit to you, and I'd like to echo what Councilor Cooper said, is that Reading's gain is our loss. But I wish you all the best, and I'm glad you guys are going to stay in Chelsea, but, you know, good luck in your new endeavors, and I truly wish you all the best. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson.
I'll be brief. Just want to say, Fidel, Fidel's a good man, good family man. Anytime that you picked up the phone and you called Fidel, he was right there for you. He demonstrated he was a great leader of people. But one of the things I want to point out that a lot of people don't know, he was very responsible in us being able to maintain our capital improvement plan, and that's how a lot of these things were able to be, get done, and it was through your leadership. I just want to say thank you for that.
Councilor Vega.
Fidel, I'm sorry, excuse me. So I want to echo what a lot of my colleagues already have stated and say thank you, Fidel, for your service. You are amazing, and, and I want to highlight a couple things, and two things that I would say that really speak out at the type of man that you are. When we had an event that you were there, first, I would say, as a family man, the fact that you are always up and down supporting your wife and with your children, I love that, of course. So, muchisima gracias. Este, and another thing that I would say, you've never, you've never taken your leadership role for granted. You're a very humble man. And for example, when we had our event in Clark Ave, you were there, and I remember telling you, I was like, that's a huge right there. And, and there was other folks from DPW that were there and stuff. You could have asked them, and you were like, let me go get it. And, you know, the fact that you didn't abuse your power or anything like that, like, you know, for me, I was just like, that's really beautiful to see. And as a mother of two boys, you are of two boys of color, if I may, you know, you're a great example, and I think that speaks volumes. And we were very fortunate to have you for the time that you had, and, you know, I hope it's just, you know, Reading is bowing to you for a little bit, you know? And, you know, best of luck for you guys, and yeah, I'm happy for you guys, and your two girls, of course.
At this moment, I'll ask that the, our Chief of Police, please step forward. I think he has something that he wants to state prior to our giving a commendation. You have the microphone right there, sir.
Look, I'm sorry, how I'm giving it, I gave Fidel, I wasn't planning on giving it any remarks, but Fidel knows how I feel about him. Everything that was said, honestly, and then some, that this man is up, I was going to say the crack of dawn, well before the crack of dawn, I see him on my way to work, all the way down the end of Broadway, Reading. He has phenomenal energy. Tommy Dunn, Captain Dunn, and I in the back are just talking and saying the one thing that he does not do well, he doesn't know how to say no. He says yes to everything. He's incredibly responsive. Giovanni said it, many of you said it, that certainly our loss is Reading's gain. The police chief in Reading had reached out to me and had met Fidel, was very impressed, and I said, you don't know what you're getting. He is absolutely phenomenal. Hopefully, he'll represent Reading like he did in Chelsea, and I know he will, but he is one of those leaders, in my opinion, that comes along once in a generation. He's absolutely phenomenal, and I'm very proud of you, and congratulations.
I don't normally do this, and I don't know if anyone has any problem, but typically we allow speakers to give testimony after the resolutions. But since the chief, I've already allowed the chief to say, if there's any other member of the public or from staff prior to us giving the resolution to Fidel, if they'd like to say any words, I'll allow them also to say any words on the presentation of the resolution to Fidel.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. So I wasn't planning to speak. If I had planned to, I would have much more and be much more articulate. I will just say that many of you know how highly I regard Fidel. I've looked at him as someone who is just an incredible administrator and an incredible public servant, and he has made my life so much easier here. A lot of the tremendous progress that we've made in the last five years has come because of the hard work and dedication of Fidel. He's always made me look good, and a lot of times, it's his efforts that people have looked to me to give credit for, but in fact, they were due to the hard work of Fidel and others in this building. And so I am certainly going to miss him. I will say that Reading is not only getting an extraordinarily capable administrator, but really a top-notch human being, and so all I can say is congratulations, Fidel. I wish you the very best.
If there's any objections, I'd speak from the chair.
No objections, Mr. President.
Thank you. I will be brief because, again, a lot of the things I would have said tonight, however it would have been said, mostly that Fidel has been one of the most accessible DBW Commissioners I've had, been honored to work with. As a City Council who calls different department heads to seek assistance with constituent issues, he's been very quick to respond and get a satisfactory conclusion to those. Again, a true professional, and I think it's also a testament that in the very short time that he's been here, he has received numerous resolutions for his work here, and that has just not been the case, and I don't mean to slight any other department head, present or not here, but I just want to say that it was well-deserved, all the citations that he got over the years and resolutions, and from this council and the public in all. So again, I wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. Thank you. Seeing that, at this time, I will hold a five-minute suspension of the meeting so that we can honor Fidel and take some pictures here in front. Please join us. so that we can honor Fidel and take some pictures here in front. Please join us. We'll now continue the rest of our meeting. At this time, we will ask if, we will open up our public speaking portion of our meeting. If our city manager will assist us in returning the microphone at its proper location, we'd appreciate it. Anyone willing, or anyone who's here to address the city council, please state your name and your address. You'll have four minutes. Please step up to the microphone. Thank you. Mark. Calvin, want to, Calvin, thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Griffin. I live at 70 Prescott Ave in Chelsea.
Can you speak closer into the microphone? Thank you. Oh, you can hold it, either way.
So I live at 70 Prescott Ave in Chelsea. My name's Jennifer Griffin. I am here tonight to request a change in ordinance for Chapter 25, Section 24 to 54. With an uptick in crime, I felt compelled to question those sworn to protect, what those sworn to protect are doing to combat the rise. To my surprise, what I uncovered sparked even more dismay than what I went looking for. Apparently, a higher crime rate and less success than managing it qualifies for a larger salary. After looking into the Chelsea police officer's pay due to Chelsea being in the top 25 most dangerous cities, ranking number 13. Revere being a minute away from Chelsea with a higher population, same number of offices, and not falling anywhere near the top 25. After comparing the salaries to Revere, which has 109 offices, a population of 53,000, Chelsea with 111 offices and a population of 39,000. One would think with the numbers in the force being neck-to-neck, the crime rate would be similar. Overall, Chelsea is paid much more than Revere. If that is not bad enough, when I requested records to justify the $4,252,195.89 paid in details and overtime, I was told by Pam Johnson that there is no document. There's nothing in their system. They have no way to track this. So with that being said, I had sent a 24-minute video in fast motion, for obvious reasons, to the city councilors to give you an idea of what takes place when an officer is at a detail and why it's not necessary. Financially, it is far cheaper to have a flagman over an officer. To give another example and put it in perspective, one officer had worked 2,000 in two hours in details, 573 hours in overtime. Now, in total, 2,575 hours. You divide it by 52 weeks, that officer works an extra 49 hours a week. There is no way on top of a 40-hour work week that anybody can be productive, working 89 hours a week. So I just ask that it be taken into consideration that with us being in the top 25, that maybe we can consider having flagmen. It's not a law, a state law. Governor Deval Patrick passed it where flagmen are allowed to be at details. So it's pretty much the city ordinance now that's stopping it. And I think if we have flagmen, we have more people patrolling the street, maybe less crime. That's all I have. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council? Please come up and state your name and address. Seeing none, that portion of the meeting is now closed. We'll now move on to Part Five, the approval of the minutes. Regular meeting minutes for January 10th, 2022.
Under suspension. If there are no objections.
Counselor Judith Garcia moves to adopt the communication, or the minutes, under suspension. Seeing no objection, that carries. We'll now have communications from the city manager.
Notice of residency waiver. Pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section 112.02, I am ready to notify you that it is my intention to hire Mr. Cameron Clark, 47 Beach Glen Street, Boston, as another part-time ESOL instructor and to grant him a waiver from the residency requirement set forth in Administrative Code, Part Four, Section 112.01. There was only one Chelsea applicant for these available part-time ESOL positions, and we already hired that individual. And according to Section 112.02, I requested you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days.
What is the wish of the council? Counselor Vido asks that we accept and file under suspension. Seeing no objection. Next communication.
Next communication from the city manager. Audit of taking and transfer appropriation for Upper Broadway project. Dear councilors, I am ready to request the city council authorize the acquisition of payment for the permanent temporary easements necessary to complete the comprehensive reconstruction of Upper Broadway. As you know, the Upper Broadway project seeks to reconstruct Broadway from City Hall Avenue to the Revere City Line.
Counsel Robinson.
I would ask to waive the rest of the reading. I'd like to move this to a subcommittee on conference, and I'd also like to request the maps to show these properties so we can have an idea what we're voting on in regards to the money.
And a public hearing? And a public hearing?
And a public hearing.
Counsel Brown? Microphone.
So, yeah, I was going to say, we need to get a public hearing and also a notice to make sure we get that in the papers. And then set the hearing. After the hearing, we can have a second reading after that so the public be aware, because there's a lot of properties that are adjoining to these and a lot of money that's been dispersed that we have to really understand it through the financial of why and why certain folks get a certain amount of money and others. Thank you.
So just to clarify to my colleagues and also those watching us at home, we will be moving this to a subcommittee meeting. Also, we will be having a public hearing prior to any vote on this. There are work orders relating to, rather, financial orders, so they are required to have two readings anyway. But that will be scheduled, and we'll make note of the time. Next communication.
Next communication, notice of residency waiver pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section 112.02. I'm ready to notify you that it is my intention to hire Mr. Richard Parisi, 45 Dexter Street PBD, as a part-time fill-in in 911. Dispatch and to grant him a waiver from the residency requirement set forth in Administrative Code, Part Four, Section 112.01. As you may know, former Deputy Chief Parisi recently retired after more than 30 years in the Chelsea Fire Department. He has vast experience handling public safety matters in this city. And according to Section 112.02, I request you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days.
Counsel de Jesus.
Accept and file. Communication under suspension.
Seeing no objection, that is moved, accepted under suspension. Next item on the agenda is a communication from the parking clerk, Jeanette Centron White. Dear ladies and gentlemen, in accordance to Section 6-3B of the Chelsea City Council, I'm sorry, Charter, the following actions were approved on January 4th. 2022 Traffic and Parking Commission meeting. Item number three, to install three-inch-high speed bumps along with pedestrian safety signage on Marlboro Street. Please note that the elevated intersection at Highland and Marlboro Street has been excluded from the approved plan. The intersection will solely consist of restructuring the crosswalk, redoing imprint asphalt, and installation of new pedestrian signage. Counsel Lopez.
If there's no objection, I would like to speak on it.
I believe we don't need a vote, right? Because it's parking clerk, it just, except and file.
Okay, just make, make a little note about what's going on.
If you may, yes, I'll allow you to explain.
I think the traffic and parking, of the many complaints that I have got on Marlboro Street, and probably you guys remember when a girl got run over by a car, got hit by a car down on 58 Marlboro Street. People were calling me and complaining about people speeding on Marlboro Street. And I've been pushing for these bumps on Marlboro Street. And thank God, finally, we got it done. And I really appreciate the Traffic and Parking Commission, all of you guys for your support. And to the people of Marlboro Street, just let you know that our speed bumpers are coming, so traffic's going to slow down a little bit. Thank you.
We have a communication from resident Iman Rahubi regarding COVID testing sites. The email received is that I am a resident of Chelsea, and I am extremely worried about the state of COVID in the city. I do not think that enough is being done to protect the well-being of our community. At this point, there is only one COVID testing site located at St. Rose. The line is always incredibly long, to the point where many people leave midday through their wait because they cannot afford to miss so many hours from work or their family in order to test. Yesterday, it was 25 degrees out. I waited in line to receive a COVID test for two hours and only moved about six spots during the duration of my time there. Eventually, I could no longer feel my fingers or toes because of the cold. I had to leave before I could get tested. There were hundreds of people in line in front of me. What makes it worse is that I arrived to the site 30 minutes before it opens. I arrived at 12:30, and the site opens at 1:00 P.M. That means even if you show up early, there is no guarantee that you will be, receive a test. This should not be the case. We need more testing sites. Please, for the well-being of the community, we need more testing sites. I exhibited symptoms for COVID, and I have no access to a car, so I cannot drive or travel to another location for testing. All pharmacies in Chelsea or nearby have done, have no more available testing appointments. At-home testing sites are nowhere to be found. I've called pharmacies many days now, showed up in person, and even called the collaborative multiple times, and I received no response, and everything is sold out. I cannot find out if I am sick. No one in my household can. My father is in his 60s, and he is sick. He goes to work. My brother goes to work. I work from home, thankfully, but what if I get them sick? I can't even know if I'm sick because there are no resources to get tested, made accessible to us. Please help us.
Counsel Robinson, I'm sorry, Counsel Brown, you have the, I do that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I want to thank the writer for this letter. As you know, we've all been dealing with this type of frustration with COVID here. But the good news is that the state, there's some information, not only from the state, but also in the Chelsea record, where you can now, each household can now request home kits to be mailed out to them. So it has been very frustrating. As you know, you probably read the story about our colleague's mother. She was in the paper last week with the same story on the front page of the Boston Globe, talking about how long she had to wait, and that's why she was dealing with it. So it's very prudent that we take this matter very serious and just let the residents know that it is some resources out here. Please, if you don't have the last week Chelsea record, get the Chelsea record. All that information's in there. We have, my wife and I, we have tried to get through. We only got through once because they can only send four to each one household. So if you live in a complex where there's more than three units, you're probably going to have some problems because they think it's a different type of setting, and you have to actually use the phone number to call. But it is very frustrating to see folks to stand out there in those cold lines. And a week ago, there was some miscommunication, and the police or whoever the detail person came out, told them this was going to be the last person. Then they came out five minutes later, and they shut the line down. It's very frustrating. I hear these stories a lot. And hopefully, we can get through this, and hopefully, we'll be able to get through it all together. Thank you.
Counsel Lopez.
I agree with this person who sent the email. I actually called the city manager, asking for more places to do COVID tests. I experienced myself. My daughter had a trip, and she came, and we went to, to do the test for her. We were there around 11 o'clock. We didn't get there after 3 o'clock. Cold weather is crazy, and I think we need to have more sites. I asked the city manager, what can we do to help these people? You know, people being there in the cold, like he explained in the email, it's crazy. We need to do something better. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Seeing none, that was adopted under suspension. We have the next communication from resident Jennifer Griffin regarding the review of ordinance, Chapter 25, Section 24.
This is to a subcommittee on conference, so we can have some conversation. I do have some questions I would like to ask the Chief of Police around some of the things that are in the letter.
Do you want the regular subcommittee on conference or the one on public safety?
I think it's best if it's the regular one, where everyone can be there and participate.
Okay. Subcommittee on conference.
Yes.
We have another communication received from resident Yessen Romero regarding small business information. Don't think we have a address on this, but. Due to the fact that we do not have a address on this, we cannot accept it, but councilors can read it at their own leisure. We have a next item on our agenda, under new business.
Audit under new business, Counsel Taylor. Audit that a subcommittee on. Order that a subcommittee on rules and regulations be held to review the council rules.
Consul Taylor.
Asked to adopt under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing none.
Next order introduced by Consul Robinson.
Want to speak on it?
Oh.
No, I'll just say that, you know, we were talking during the last session about reviewing rules for city council, and I think that that needs to be done. It is still on our plate. We never dealt with it, so I'd like to go ahead and move that forward through committee.
Being that this is a new session, that order would have to be reintroduced, so that's fine. Any orders from the previous council do not carry forward, so the order follows suit of a new order, and it will organ, and will have that. The chairman of the chairperson of that committee will schedule that.
Next order introduced by Consul Robinson. Order that the city manager produce from the Public Health Director a breakdown of the city testing sites as to the numbers of Chelsea residents getting tested and the number of those from outside the city.
I think we missed one prior to. We have an order introduced by Consul Robinson regarding that a subcommittee on conference with 375 Broadway redevelopment project, Arc Urban, Benjamin Daniel Mole, and Phil Cohen, to include the community development director Alex Train and land use director John De Priest. Consul Robinson.
Adopted shenanigans under suspension. And I'd just be brief, actually. I know that they're looking at developing 375 Broadway, and we just had a presentation done by the people who are looking to redo the soldiers home. I thought it would be appropriate time for this group to come in and show us a presentation. Being that it's going to affect businesses and things on Broadway.
We'll now move on to the next order.
Next order. Order introduced by Consul Robinson. Order that the city manager produce from the Public Health Director a breakdown of the city testing sites as to the numbers of Chelsea residents getting tested and the number of those from outside the city.
Consul Robinson.
Adopted shenanigans under suspension. I'll be brief. I looked into the numbers because I was kind of concerned about seeing the lines lined up, not only at St. Rose, but seeing the cars that have been lined up at Beth Israel, and the cars lined up in Beth Israel were backed up on 16, backed up on Broadway Revere, that they had to move cars over to the skating rink in order to have some larenada. But I just wanted to share, as of 1/21, we had 140 cases. We should be proud that Chelsea has 87, 50% people vaccinated, and we're a higher number than the state at 78, 78.2%. There have been over 9,000 tests that were done here in Chelsea. 4,500 of those tests belong to Chelsea residents. And the fact of the matter is, are we the region testing site for all these other communities? And the fact of the matter is, I could be standing in line, and somebody could be standing in line behind me, and they could be positive, and they can affect me and other people who are standing in line waiting to get tested. So I just was really concerned about that and figured if there's any way that we might be able to address that issue with the state that they need to open up some more sites other than Chelsea. Thank you.
Consul Lopez.
Again, I already, I also talked to city manager about this. Under lines, right, when they come to do the COVID tests, I saw people from Cambridge, from Somerville, from Revere, Lynn, Massachusetts. The Consul Robinson said, are we the only site? Are we doing the COVID tests here? How come all these people are coming? And, but these people coming to Chelsea, it's less opportunity for our people in the city to get tested. So we need to figure it out, what can we do about it? Because, you know, these other cities, they should have their own sites, so these people could come here. I, you know, maybe I'm being too tough saying this, but every city should have their own site to do COVID tests. Not Chelsea, the only one, and everybody comes here, and that's why we have big, big lines. The last time I was there, I'm not lying, the line was all the way to the bridge from St. Rose, all the way there. It's unbelievable. Thank you.
Consul Recupro, then Consul Vito.
If that's the case, we should actually say, give us more money. Send more money to us. If you're going to send everybody over here, send money, send money. That way, we don't care who comes, as long as we get paid for the services that we're providing. Other cities, they get money. We should get the money. If that's the case, give us the money. State, send us money. You're going to send us people? Send us the money to take care of the people that are coming to our city.
Consul Vito.
I don't know if I'm rusty because I haven't been to council meetings in a while. I just don't see the harm. I myself have been tested in Somerville and Revere. We're in the middle of a pandemic. There's limited resources across the Commonwealth, and I figure wherever you can get a test, we should be accommodating people and not trying to ration resources. So I don't really see the beef with this, for lack of a better word, but I'm happy to have a subcommittee and talk about it. I just hope that we're not going to get to the point where we're only going to allow people that are from Chelsea to get tested because I just, that just seems a little kind of inhumane.
To clarify, this is not an order to have a meeting, but actually just gather data from the city manager, or reread so that everyone is cleared. It's just for the city manager, order that the city manager produce from the Public Health Director a breakdown of the city testing sites as to the numbers of Chelsea residents getting tested and number of those from outside the city. The city manager, I'm sure, will follow up with this to a communication to the city council on the update of what the testing sites availability will be here in addition to Beth Israel, our own testing sites, and I think MTH is also doing so. But a communication from the city manager will be expected. Next order is an order that the sum of $112,875 be appropriated from the general stabilization account fund 7020 to the Upper Broadway Right Of Way and Easement Acquisition and Legal Project. Project account number 55402120-530000 for the purpose of easement acquisition. Consul Brown.
Second reading. You already spoke about it.
Next order is an order that the sum of 100,000... I'm sorry, Consul Robinson.
You want to move to a second reading?
It moves to a second reading, but it'll be attached to the subcommittee meetings and public hearing. Next order, we have an order that the sum of $100,000 be appropriated from free cash on the fiscal year 2017 Capital Improvement Plan for Beecham Street Casino Traffic Professional and Technical Services Project, project number 55401712-530000, which was fully funded by grant funds, and such free class, free cash balance is no longer needed. To complete that project, is hereby transferred to the, of the amount of $100,000 for the Upper Broadway Right Of Way and Easement Acquisition and Legal Project, number 55402120-530000 for the purpose of easement acquisition. Consul Brown.
Second reading brief.
So moved.
Just for clarification, do we also have to...
And the subcommittee.
I'm sorry. Will these also require a legal notification?
The, the, these orders do not require a legal notification. The second reading's provided. They're already on our agenda, which is public notice. The fact that it was on tonight's agenda will be on the public hearing and also be on the next meeting when we vote as part of public notice.
Okay. If you don't mind, Mr. President, we have two more coming up, 11F and 11G, if you can just, it's pretty much the same.
Consul Brown asked that we move to a second reading of next two orders and send them to the subcommittee on the easement if there's no objection. Seeing none, those were moved under suspension. That concludes our regularly scheduled me, agenda. We now have the public announcements. Consulor Judith Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. So one public announcement that a lot of my colleagues here are, have been supporting is promoting the fact that tomorrow, there's a special election regarding the construction of the new Northeast Vocational School. So just reminding everyone that there's a special election here tomorrow at the City Hall Chambers, exactly this room, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. It is very important that you come out and vote because this decision will have a financial implication for our city for the next 30 years. So please, reminding everyone, please come out to vote between 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There's only one polling location, which is, again, City Hall Chambers. Thank you.
Consul Lopez.
Yes, I just want to say thank you, and we're here, all the city councilors, to start this year, and I think we all are here today. That's really beautiful to see everybody. I wasn't here the last time, last meeting, but just to see everybody together is really nice. And also, what is beautiful to see tonight is to see five women, the city council, never before, so I congratulate you for that.
Consul Recupro.
I would like to tell the people outside, be careful, there's a scam going on for the seniors. They're telling them that they sent, Social Security is sending them $1,400 check, supposed to come with a $1,400 stimulus checks for people 65 and older. So if they tell you that, and they call you and ask for information, don't give them any information because Social Security will send it to you automatic. So remember, beware if you get any type of a phone call that tells you that there's a stimulus of $1,400 coming to senior citizens, because if it's coming to you, it will be sent to you. So don't give them no information.
Consulor Tynidy Garcia.
Solamente quería anunciar en español que mañana, el 25 de enero, estarán, estaremos votando para la escuela vocacional de Noatis de 11:00 de la mañana a 6:00 de la tarde.
Consul Vito.
I just want to welcome the new members of the city council. It is very nice to see so much feminine energy in the room. And I also just want to thank the community and everyone for all the heartfelt messages, condolences, get well wishes, for what was a very tough year for me, and I'm really excited to get back to work and work alongside all of you. So just thank you, everybody in the community, for all your support. It feels good to be back, kinda.
At this moment, does anyone wish to have a moment of silence? Consul Robinson.
Jackie Burke, who's a longtime city employee. His mother passed away, Patricia Burke.
Thank you, and that concludes this meeting.